Welcome to the City Council's June 19 special meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with the City Council, city staff, and members of the public, participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, I would like to introduce staff and city council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Councilmember Kat Carlton, City Councilmember Betsy Nash, and City Councilmember Ray Mueller. Staff present include our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, interim city attorney Kara Silver, and city clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. This evening, we will ask that the City Council remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging their own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to make presentations, as well as respond to any questions the City Council may have. For the members of the public who are with us today, if you have a public comment on an item, when Mayor Taylor calls for public comment on the item you have a comment on, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen that'll alert us that you have a comment, and they'll have the ability to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council. Today, we did not receive any web form comments for this agenda, so if there are public comments, they will all be live. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So the first item on the agenda is our regular business, the adoption of an uncodified urgency ordinance 1070 to close portions of Santa Cruz Avenue, creating temporary outdoor use permits, and suspending certain fees and zoning requirements. To present this item is our... I'm not sure who's presenting the item. Mr. Passman, I assume it's you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. One second while I get the presentation up. Good ear... good afternoon. Can I confirm that the presentation is shown?
Yes, it is. Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. Alright, so, good afternoon, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, council members. Today, I'll give you a brief presentation on the urgency ordinance before you to partially close down Santa Cruz and establish a temporary outdoor space, use of space permit. So, give you a quick overview. Just recently, earlier this week, on June 16th, we presented to council the proposal from the Chamber of Commerce to partially close Santa Cruz Avenue. In that meeting, City Council gave us direction to... I gave staff direction to come up with a proposal or an ordinance that followed the Chamber of Commerce proposal. City Council also directed a streamlining of permits for the usage of outdoor space, wanted to waive all fees associated with those permits, and have it be a temporary pilot program with a length of 90 days and a 45-day check-in. So, that is what is before you this afternoon. Staff is recommending the adoption of an urgency ordinance that is in line with that council direction from earlier this week. The reason for the urgency, of course, is to allow for an expedited timeline, and staff has already taken steps in order to ensure that this closure can happen as expeditiously as possible. So, that includes just yesterday posting notice of a street and park enclosure, which puts us already in the 72-hour window required to do so. And they also... So, the target is early next week, and the assuming adoption of the ordinance by City Council. And the limiting factor on that timeline will likely be the procuring the K rails from the Menlo Park Fire District. But staff is hopeful that it will be early next week. So, I'm going to give you a quick overview again of the diagram of the closures so that our council is aware of just exactly what's proposed in this ordinance. You have... the diagram's been cleaned up a little bit and given a little bit extra detail to better establish exactly what's going to be happening on the ground on Santa Cruz. So, excuse me. The roadblocks have been called out specifically. They're going to be three 10-foot K rails to prevent vehicle entry into the closed-off areas, which are denoted in the red. Also, just as with the previous diagram, you'll see that the restaurants are called out in yellow. And one key difference here is that we've separated the existing cafe dining with the sort of parklit outdoor expansion that's been proposed on portions of the street that are to remain active with traffic. So, as you can see, in front of Wet Bank and Bistro Vita, there is the existing parklets. And then, out in front of Stack and Stacks and Mr. Green Bubble and Purple are the outdoor expansion that's been denoted in the proposal. So, the city has identified that we have a limited number of planners available to be used to as barricades first, the outdoor expansion on the parking areas that will remain on streets that will still have vehicular traffic. So, you'll see those, and I'll point them out as we go through the other portions of the diagram. And then, as you can see, this directional traffic pattern is still shown in blue arrows. So, the second portion, the Chestnut to Crane closure, as you can see right here. And then, the final portion between Crane and Evelyn. And then, once again, we have some closed-off parking spaces that should be utilized, city planners, out in front of the Art Ventures Gallery and on University Drive next to Canton. So, another crucial component of this ordinance, urgency ordinance, would be the temporary outdoor use permit. So, the permit has... allows for different things downtown versus outside downtown. Downtown defined here is the area bounded by Oak Manor Real, Menlo University, and Oak Grove. The... Sorry. Let me go back one. So, yeah, it's bounded by those streets. And in the downtown, businesses will be able to apply for a use... Temporary outdoor use permit in the public right-of-way parking plazas and in private property. Outside downtown, they're able to apply for private property inside lots. And the key distinction here is outside of downtown, most businesses or their parking lots are private property. So, that's why that's really the key component for businesses outside downtown. The Community Development Department will be processing these temporary outdoor use permits. And so, that permit is being put together on an extremely short timeline. The goal is to have them available through the online permitting system, Acela, early next week. And then, Community Development is targeting a 48 to 72-hour review timeline. And as directed by City Council, fees will be waived. So, some of the permanent requirements that have been identified by staff, but not necessarily an exhaustive list just yet, are shown here on this slide. So, liability insurance, adherence to the health orders, of course, and compliance with accessibility requirements. The barriers adjacent to roadways, that includes parking lots where there will still be vehicular traffic. So, we're talking in parking plazas, private parking lots, businesses will be asked to provide some sort of barricade that is identified as adequate to protect patrons from road hazards or vehicle hazards. And in private parking lots that are shared, the business will need to show that the other parties that share the private lot with them consent to the usage, to their outdoor usage of the parking lot. And then, there will be no expansion into electric vehicle or accessible spaces. And then, applicants or the businesses will be responsible for furnishing their outdoor spaces and maintenance, which is in line with what we've... With the input we received from the chamber that most businesses are willing and able to do so. So, the council has also directed staff to take an assessment of what the impact would be to the city resources for this project. And staff still generally expects this to monetarily have a fairly light impact to city resources. And this is mainly because staff has identified sort of the materials in ways that have no cost associated with them. So, the K rails from the Fire District being one example, and then, the planners already available for parking space barriers is also another example of materials that the city already has access to at no cost right now. So, the... in general, the largest, the primary impact to the city would be staff time. We're looking at, especially for the Community Development Department, we're looking at putting together a permit and the permitting system essentially over a weekend. And then, once that system's online, taking in applications and turning them around in 48 to 72 hours, which would require a certain significant amount of prioritization in the department. And it's similar for Public Works in putting out the K rails and planners. So, this is... this represents sort of an opportunity cost on other projects that these departments are involved with and other day-to-day activities, such as... And such as general permit review times may suffer as a result of prioritization on this project. And also, there's no cost recovery associated with these permits due to the fee waivers. So, that is also another thing to take into account. So, staff is recommending the downtown StreetScape capital improvement program fund be made available for this project. Or for, just in case there are other sort of unexpected costs associated with it, this is $300,000 in carryover funds, and it's been used for similar projects, such as the parklets that are already downtown. So, this afternoon, what staff is recommending is that the City Council take action to adopt this urgency ordinance, closing portions of Santa Cruz Avenue, creating a temporary outdoor use permit, and suspending certain fees and zoning requirements for the 90 days. And that is my presentation. We have various subject matter experts from the departments available, as well as myself, to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passman, for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from the council before we take public comment? Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item C1 regarding the adoption of uncodified urgency ordinance number 1070, closing portions of Santa Cruz Avenue, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. You will then have the opportunity to engage your microphone, and you can address the City Council. So, again, we are taking public comment for item C1 regarding closing portions of Santa Cruz Avenue. If you would like to speak on this item, please use that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. And Mayor Taylor, I am seeing no hands raised. So, you may bring this back to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So, does anyone have any questions for staff on this item? Councilmember Nash?
Hi. I would just like to, as funds are spent on it, to get some... Be alerted to how much we're spending depending for any significant amounts of the $300,000, just so that we are aware of what's being spent on it. Not prior to it, but just after. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so, one thing that I... maybe I missed it, and I don't think I did because of the what was recounted in what was going to be spent, was I think that it's really important that when we do this, that we don't create sort of vacuumed concrete deserts in the middle of Santa Cruz Avenue. And so, I'd like to ask my colleagues if we could direct staff to spend money on potted trees to go near the concrete barriers that could be replanted elsewhere in the city later, but during this time period, sort of insulate those concrete barriers so it creates like a garden-like surrounding of these areas and other types of foliage that could be replanted elsewhere after this, but so that it would... it would create a welcoming environment so that it wasn't just like you got some concrete barriers from the highway and stuck them down and said, "Okay, guys, go out and eat." So, if you guys would all... if there's support for that, I'd like to direct that to staff.
And that would come out of the $300,000 budget?
Yes.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you. We have the third council member who's interested in that?
Councilmember Carlton and Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Carlton, did you have a question?
I did. I understand why the suggestion's made, and it's a good one. I'm getting very anxious about when we spend money because we've cut things back so far. So, I'm saying it's a good idea. It looks good. And also, when you put up big concrete planters, it also increases safety visually, as well as in protection. I was just wondering how much you think something like that would cost?
So, I think... I don't think you necessarily need to put up concrete planters. I think that you can get trees in boxes.
Okay.
And trees in boxes typically will run around between 500 to 800 a tree. But because those trees would be planted elsewhere in the city later, it wouldn't be a net loss.
Okay. I love the idea of replanning the trees anyway, and so I'm happy to support that.
Thank you.
With the view to it not just being pretty, but also increasing safety for people.
Yeah, it definitely would increase what you were seeing. I don't know if staff has an opinion... professional staff has an opinion on whether or not that's feasible.
Is that a motion with... were you making a motion with that addition? If so, I'll second it.
Okay, sure. If no one else has anything else to add, I just didn't want to...
I'm sorry, I wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'm totally supportive. My only concern is that maybe should we make the... If we're adding to the motion, it's just sort of less restrictive, right? Giving staff some mandate to try to increase the foliage or to increase the... You know, maybe it's a case that like they can rent the trees, right? And so, I'm 100% supportive, but just want to give staff flexibility to like, you know, to deliver in a way that was easy for them to deliver without having to come back to us on this issue.
Absolutely. I'm in agreement with that.
I agree. Were there any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. So, I'm not sure if Councilmember Carlton made the motion already, or...
I think Councilmember Mueller made the motion, and I said I'd second it.
Well, I'll make sure... I'll make a motion that we adopt uncodified urgency order 1070, closing portions of Santa Cruz Avenue, creating outdoor use permits and suspending certain fee and zoning requirements with the recommended funding included in the staff report, and also with direction to empower staff to purchase trees and foliage as such to go ahead and make... that can be replanted elsewhere in the city afterwards to create a welcoming environment.
I'll second that. Did... was you had a cap on the amount?
There was a cap within the... I don't have a cap on the foliage. I'm going to leave that up to staff to figure out what they think is appropriate.
Councilmember Nash?
I trust them to do that.
I... I'm sorry, I missed what Councilmember Carlton said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said I would second that motion, but I would like staff to let us know how much they spent on the... I'd like to have it...
So, that was my concern. I believe you're looking for just making sure that we keep this a reasonable budget item. Thank you.
I think Scott... staff got that direction. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller to adopt ordinance number 1070 with the recommended funding in the staff report and empower staff to purchase trees and foliage that can be replanted or reused and to report back to the City Council with those spendings. And a second by Councilmember Carlton. By roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, since it's a similar topic, I am going to take item C3 first. And that is to appoint City Council representatives to the Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce Business Reactivation Task Force. The presenter for this item is our management analyst of housing, Mr. John Passman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff doesn't have a presentation on this item. This is a follow-up from the Tuesday meeting and an opportunity for the council to make those appointments.
Okay. Well, does anyone on the council have any recommendations on this item? I know, I think we were all interested in participating. Councilmember Carlton?
I had volunteered, but I thought Betsy and I had volunteered, but there was, I think, discussion on how that would work.
Actually, I think I am interested, but I believe that Mayor Taylor was also interested.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was it Mayor Taylor and I? Okay.
I think so.
So, this staff report, there are some changes to this staff report, if I'm not mistaken, some of the information that the chambers provided.
Madam Mayor, is...
If no one has any, Mr. Passman?
So, I thought that was a question, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
If it wasn't a question, then I had nothing. I thought there was a question in there, sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Passman? Okay, so we'll just keep... Councilmember Nash? I cannot hear you.
I was interested... actually, I was not... So, I was wondering if you were interested. I believe you had expressed interest in serving on the subcommittee.
I am interested in serving on the task force, but I'm more than welcome you to serve as well. So, it's up to you. And I know that there will be some overlap with the subcommittee, but I believe the subcommittee would end and the task force would continue, is my assumption.
I believe that the... Actually, I am not sure. I believe that the subcommittee will continue throughout the 90 days. And so, it may make sense to bifurcate them.
Okay. Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson?
Yes, thank you. I believe the council never took formal action to appoint councilmembers Mueller and Nash, that they have just had a joint interest in working on this project. So, I'm not... so, there's not a tenure to the existing work that Mueller and Nash are providing. But the... Yes, ma'am, am I wrong? I think the reason this agenda item is presented to you tonight is to have the council give us direction on who would like to work with the council, with the task force in the future. But I do want to make the council aware that the Chamber of Commerce expressed to the mayor and I when we met with them Thursday morning that they're going to prioritize the work on Santa Cruz, and this will be a follow-up endeavor.
Thank you for the clarity. Councilmember Nash, and then Councilmember Mueller?
I was... I believe that Councilmember Mueller and I would both very much like to continue with the work on Santa Cruz Avenue. And so, I don't know how that fits in with this task force, which I thought was going to be then separate from the Santa Cruz Avenue work. But I would like to see the Santa Cruz Avenue project through its entirety, if at all possible.
Noted. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so, as I think about it, what's unclear to me is the scope of the task force. And so, I kind of suggest is that we initially appoint... My guess is the task force is going to be sort of an ongoing project. And I know that project to project may change from the task force. So, what I'd love to have is like check-ins from the task force to see, because there may be subject matters that come up that current members of the task force may not be interested in, that the chamber is interested in, or even may not support the chamber supports. And so, to have people sort of at inflection points rotating in and out, I think would probably make sense. I think that the... I mean, I could envision the chamber... You know, sometimes we all have the same vision like this time, and sometimes we don't. So, maybe that things will come up with the chamber that we may want to switch in and out over time. So, in terms of the work on Santa Cruz Avenue right now, I actually would like to continue to work on the closures, if that's okay with my colleagues. And then, when the task force starts up on the other issues, I obviously very much appreciate you guys taking the load of that. Does that work? Is that acceptable? Councilmember Carlton and Madam Mayor?
I'm comfortable with that. Councilmember Carlton?
That's fine. I'm not really sure what triggers that change, but sure.
Well, okay.
At this time...
What were you envisioning as the change? I'm not...
I candidly, I was relying on the statement of the chamber that the task force work would start after the 90-day... And I'm not even sure it's a 90-day pilot. I'm pretty sure it's a 45-day pilot. So, it might be shorter, but I think it's over. Who knows? My math right now, I'm so tired. But whenever the pilot... Yeah, whenever the pilot is assessed, if it continues, it continues. And we can maybe... why don't we say this? Why don't we... don't we all check in at the pilot, at the pilot date on where we are and see if it's a proper turnover time? Does that work for everyone?
That's fine.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you. And at this time, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment? Thank you, Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council. So for any members of the public who are with us, if you would like to make a comment on item C3 regarding the appointments of City Council representatives to the Chamber of Commerce Reactivation Task Force, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and have you address the City Council directly. At this time, I do see a hand raised. First public commenter is Fran Dean. Fran, you're off mute. If you would like to address the City Council at this time?
Thank you very much. And I think you were going along the same lines I had. And we really thank the council for reviewing the plans on the Business Reactivation Task Force. But as mentioned on Tuesday evening's study session, we outlined stages of implementation that were short-term, intermediate, and long-term objectives. Originally, when we were thinking about this, the most time-critical element would be addressed by council's recommendation to consider the downtown street closure pilot. We moved forward that with that aspect independently. We submitted the proposal for your consideration. And we really thank you for not only your consideration, but your action today. We do view the task force as serving all business sectors in multiple ways. And as such, the focus and representation may vary after the initial short-term focus, which we identified as one to three months. And I would also say this is probably defined as and coincides with the pilot and the evaluation for the downtown street closures. So what I was going to say, but I think your conversation has gone in that direction, that we encourage council to view the task force function in light of that with individual interests in participating in the current action to reopen business versus perhaps the intermediate and long-term focus on the rebuilding process. And maybe that check-in point or that determination of going to phase two or intermediate is the end of the pilot and evaluation period. So again, I think that you have all had that conversation among yourselves and are really identifying our thought process there. So I leave it up to you as to, there are two council members that would be in a different phase. That is completely up to you. And we can, through working with the city manager, the city attorney, make certain that there is no overlap that would prevent this from, or prohibit any Brown Act violation. So thanks.
Thank you, Fran, for your comment. At this time, I am seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor. So you may continue your City Council discussions. Thank you. I couldn't hear anything Ms. Heron said. My apologies. We do not have any further hands raised. So we can close public comment and return to City Council discussions. Thank you. So are there any follow-up questions or comments? Councilmember Mueller?
So I'll make a motion, if that's okay. I'll move that we appoint Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Carlton to the task force, moving into that task force position around the assessment of the pilot period for the downtown closures. And until that time, Councilmember Nash and myself will continue to work with the Chamber of Commerce with respect to the downtown Santa Cruz closures.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to appoint Mayor Taylor and City Councilmember Carlton to the Chamber of Commerce Business Reactivation Task Force. By roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton? I believe that was an aye. City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yep.
City, or Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is C2, authorize the city manager to execute a master agreements with consulting firms for on-call architectural, landscape architectural, civil engineering, construction inspection, municipal engineering, and material testing services. The presenter for this item is our senior transportation engineer, Michael Foo.
Hello. Hello, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Just to confirm, can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Pretty cool artwork. And again, my name is Michael Foo, with Public Works. And I'm here tonight, or this afternoon, rather, to present on our on-call consulting procedures and services. So I will be hosting a brief presentation on this matter. We'll just talk about introduction, background, the on-call selection process for this round. And then we'll go over a few project examples using on-call staff and consultants. And we'll wrap it up with a conclusion for council action and follow it up with some questions that may result from the presentation. So in short, the council action that we're requesting is to have the council authorize a city manager to execute on-call master agreements with multiple consulting firms. Those firms range in six different categories for this round, including services for architectural, landscape architectural, civil engineering, construction inspection, municipal engineering, and materials testing. So in essence, the on-call master agreement is a set of conditions between the city and a consultant for service request based on our city's template for consultant services. Terms are typically valid for three years with an option to extend for two additional years thereafter. And the conditions do not need to be renegotiated every time a task order is issued during the term of the master agreement. So in essence, the action tonight will not result in any direct expenditure of city resources as on-call services are on a as-needed basis based on project and demand. What essentially happens is the action taken tonight will advance the next procedures to create an on-call list of consultants. And this list, again, was in reaction to various existing on-call contracts, which were expiring at the end of this fiscal year, which staff reviewed and felt the need to renew. It also allows for continuity of workflow for existing funded CIP projects with existing on-call support. And it would also help us expand the previous on-call list for services of firms which were aligned with current and projected project workloads. So lastly, I guess there's a question of why are these on-call consultants important and why are master agreements important? Well, a few examples would be the city currently employs a variety of on-call personnel for specialized services. One example listed here is the city surveyor. Also critical for expediting project delivery in lieu of a lengthier RFP process for each time that a consultant service is required on a project. And then lastly, but not least, it's critical, certain on-call staffers, critical for scopes of work that require input beyond staff expertise. And in parentheses, in this slide, I wrote structural engineering as one example. So as a list of background, some examples of on-call services that were employed in current and previous years would include master planning, for example, the transportation master plan, certainly for project design on water upgrades, other utility upgrades, streets and sidewalks, park maintenance, tenant improvements. And again, I believe we, I talked about this earlier, but for certain staff reports, staff support, rather, just the city surveyor and inspection services for construction. And City Council has authorized on-call agreements in previous years. Three years listed would be 2012 for engineering and survey on-call services, 2018 for transportation engineering, and 2019, we expanded the list for architectural cost estimating and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing on calls. And just as a, as part of this due diligence, we looked at how many on-call task orders were issued between the last through fiscal years. And on average, there were 27 on-call task orders. So again, if you can imagine, you know, trying to go through the RFP process 27 times in lieu of issuing an on-call consultant, which has an established history in the city of Menlo Park, is quite a bit of savings for time for project delivery. So I just want to talk briefly on the on-call selection process for this round for the staff report. So in April of this year, we issued a request for proposals for on-calls across the six categories listed, and staff received 74 proposals as a result of the RFP. And we ranked the proposals by separating teams of three to review by category. And each team member was selected with special attention to their suitable experience relative to the category that they were reviewing. So for instance, you know, landscape architects, we would include someone from the Parks Department in that respect and so forth. And what happened was members would individually rank their top choices with a scorecard. And thereafter, they would meet collectively to kind of confirm their selection and if there were, and kind of just consolidate their top three or four choices based on the amount of proposals received. And to list some scoring metrics that were considered, there were fees, certainly, the work quality, references from other cities, also references from past experience in Menlo Park, and suitability for the scope of work that we were looking for, for again, current and future project workloads. And the last one I listed here was availability in terms of how soon and how much time they could devote to a certain project task. So lastly, on this slide, there was a state legislative requirement, I believe as Proposition 209, which again prohibits public agencies from any preferential treatment for public contracts based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. And that factors into certainly the discussion for on-call contracts as well. Next to last slide would be some project examples we currently have using on-call contracts. Here I listed some master planning projects, again, the transportation master plan, safe routes to school, design support for various roadway, pump station projects, and then construction support for services, construction inspection services, as well as COVID-19 compliance per San Mateo County to continue construction on active projects. And again, as noted earlier, we have staff support for on-calls that range from city surveyor and also as well as our lighting and signal maintenance contract. So in conclusion, again, the council action we are seeking tonight is to award on-call contracts to the selected consultants for the staff report. And again, these on-call contracts and consultants serve a vital role on numerous CIP and public works projects. And thank you very much. That concludes the presentation. And we welcome any questions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foo, for the presentation. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item? At this time, I ask that any member of the public who wishes to speak on item C2, which is regarding authorization to the city manager to execute the master agreements, to engage that hand feature in the top right side of their screen, will be able to open up your microphone and give you the opportunity to provide your public comment. Again, this is for item C2 regarding authorizing the city manager to execute the master agreements with listed consultants. Mayor Taylor, at this time, I see no hands raised. You may return this to the City Council. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Heron. Well, I have a few questions on this item. And my first question is, do you require any of the contractors that we already do business with to provide the city with a performance review? Mr. Foo?
Hello, Mayor. I don't have the answer on the top of my head. Can I, I may have to defer this question to either Chris Lamb or Nikki Nagaya?
Okay. I don't know if Mr. Lamb or Ms. Nagaya are available.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Chris Lamb, this is the Public Works Director. To answer your question, we, none of the work is guaranteed. So while there's not necessarily a formal process in which we're doing performance reviews on our on-call list, it definitely does play a factor in whether or not we would seek additional task orders from those consultants and then also, you know, for future renewals of the agreement.
The reason I ask is because there are several consultants on this list that we've already done business with. And so can we add to the policy, the purchasing policy, to include a performance review for accountability?
So performance review to be conducted at the end of the contract that would go on file?
Well, it would be great if it was, well, it would be great if it could also be a part of the tiering, however you decided which contractor you would go with. As if we've already, if we have a contract with that company or in the past, that a performance review is done as a part of how you choose which contractor we select and put on this list.
So I think we can definitely look into that in terms of, you know, establishing that criteria in the purchasing policy. I think we'd want to make sure that we work through any unintended consequences. If we don't have experience with a certain contractor, then obviously they would not be able to, we wouldn't have that evaluation on file. And so then it gets just a little tough to compare the two.
Well, moving forward, my concern is if we are getting, if we have residents contacting us about who we contract with and they're having difficulty with them. So I'm trying to put in some type of accountability measure. I'm getting calls about our billing for water. I don't know if anybody else on the council is as well. But just thinking in terms of that, what measure can we put in place and who we do business with to ensure that we're doing business with someone that has high quality?
Sure. I think we can definitely look into a way to formalize that in the RFP process.
And then with the, as far as having a three-year master agreement, I'm not in support of that. I'll just say that first. And so it says on here, usually it's yearly basis. So I know that having three years of a commitment, so you don't have to come back to the council, but I'd like to see this come back annually if I'm going to approve it. So would that cause a lot of delay? I hear time, time versus money. Do you see that as being a challenge, Mr. Lamb?
So definitely no issues in terms of money, since there's no, there's no actual money being awarded as part of these master agreements. In terms of, in terms of time, it's just, you know, a staff time essentially to amend the agreements each year then. And then I guess the question would be if the direction is that council wants to approve those agreements each year as part of the extension. Currently, the extensions, when we have our Currently, the extensions, when we have our master agreements, are not coming back to council for approval.
Do I have support from the rest of the council as far as adding a performance review to who we contract with, to our purchasing policy? To have support from the council? Councilmember Mueller, I'm not sure if you have a question. Councilmember Carlton, and then Councilmember Mueller.
I was, I actually had spoken to the city manager about this in terms of if someone, and then needs to be removed from the city, on, we deal with, because currently we're dealing with maybe not or remove one.
That's a question for you, Mr. Lamb.
For the record, I, Councilmember Carlton, we were unable to hear a lot of what you were saying. You may want to disengage your webcam and just utilize the microphone.
Is that better? Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Sure. I spoke to the city manager about what happens when contractors performs in a less than optimum way and maybe needs to be removed from the list or replaced by someone else. Would that need to come back to us? What would be the protocol for that? And inherent in that question is the fact that every single time one of the contractors finishes work, there is some form of review. I know that that works when we're contracting a company with a specific project rather than individuals. But I agree that there is at some point a review that happens on performance. And first of all, I agree that there needs to be a review. But then my follow-on question is, when we have that review and it's not positive, what is the protocol for how we deal with that?
Sure. So yeah, you, you're absolutely right. There, you know, at the end of every project, obviously, staff evaluates their, their experience with, with the consultant or the contractor on any given project. The, the process in on, for these types of master agreements would essentially be to, to not, not grant additional work, additional task orders against, against the agreement. So we, we purposely look for, for multiple consultants to help fill some of these roles so that we have available, options available to us, not only for, for the availability of, of the consultants, but to ensure that, that we're getting good quality service on, on the projects and for these services. In the case that where maybe we, let's say, had multiple consultants that we, that we were not having a good experience with, you know, the city has the right to terminate an agreement at any time for, for any cause. And if we needed additional on-call services for that, then we would issue a new, a new RFP and, and ask council to, to award a new, a new master agreement.
Has that happened in the past, Mr. Lamb?
Typically, what, what would happen is the, the, the original agreement would just, you know, essentially expire, and we would not grant any additional extension. And then if, if needed, like I said, we will, we would issue a new RFP for, for additional, additional consultant.
So looking at the, well, oh, Councilmember Mueller, forgive me, you had a question.
Okay. So I just wanted to ask, so I remember, and it was a while back, that this issue used to come up when I was working at the county. And at the county, there was a rule that, I'm looking at right now, actually, that contracts and master service agreements could be, could be done for a five-year term. And then if it was anything longer than, if you had to renew past five years, but anything longer than five years would come, would come to the board. And it would be, and then the absolute furthest you could go out would be seven years. And the reason being for that, and then I know it's both, both from that and also my professional life, is that the longer of a master service agreement that you negotiate, the better pricing that you can get within that service agreement. And so I would sort of, I do understand that we want to have, there's a need to make sure that there's turnover, but I wonder if it might be achieved through a city council policy setting the maximum term for a MSA without coming back for approval, and also setting forth that you could only extend past, you know, and you don't have, we wouldn't have to set it at five, we could set it at three, but that the reason, one of the parameters for that deciding that would be better pricing. Because the, the ability to achieve best pricing for the city and the efficiency around that is actually something that is of, of policy interest, especially now at the time that money is, money is short. So I just offer that for, for my colleagues to think about.
That makes a lot of sense, Councilmember Mueller. One of my concerns, another concern that I had with this item is just the dollar amount. Did we lay off any staff that performed any of these tasks?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I'm concerned about dollar amount. The lowest is, I think, the staff report says 50, from $50 to $500 per hour. But at least on the municipal engineering, the highest is $600 an hour. So and I understand that there are technical expertise, not challenging anyone's wage. Again, we laid off staff, and then I'm looking at the dollar amounts here that we're going to contract out. So that's one of the reasons why I pulled this item. Looking at the services under architectural, it says historic building preservation and, and restoration. Is that, that's an on-call? And is that city, citywide, or is that only city facilities property that we own?
I may, I may need to defer back to, to Mr. Fu on this one. I'll take a stab at answering it, and then I'll pop off. And if he, he feels that I didn't answer adequately, then I'll let him jump on and add to it. But the, the work that's, that's, would all be for, for, for city facilities. We, you know, the, the gatehouse is a, is a historic building. So, you know, any, any work that would be done on it would, would need to be done by a professional that, that has, has that type of experience. The, but the, again, these are, these are some broad, broad scopes of work that, that we have available to us. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to use each, each scope of work identified in the master agreements. In terms of the, the dollar values, the hourly rates, I, I do want to just kind of point out that as, as part of the RFP process, we ask that the consultants provide to us kind of the full, their, their full range of rates for, for different types of services. So that range is anywhere from admin, admin support up to, you know, if, if their principal or president of the company was, was involved in a project for, for any given reason, what, what that rate would be. I believe that the $600 an hour rate that's referenced is for LIDAR services, which is very, very technical surveying equipment that would go out onto a project. We, we almost certainly don't have any projects that, that would utilize that. But it's, but it's, as part of the on-call service, it's a, it's a service that is available to us if for some reason it was needed.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. I appreciate your follow-up on that question. I'm, I'm still only comfortable with one year, not three years. Councilmember Nash?
I have a couple of questions. And one is, when I look at the type of services that are offered, some are that we use for these organizations for, I understand some are sort of one-off services, and that makes a lot of sense to me to use a master, to have a master list of firms. But when, on some of them, where we're doing a master plan or some, some other, well, I'm looking up at that, like it's the transportation master plan or the Haven Avenue roadway improvements, where it says it's an actual whole project, do we just choose one of these folks? Or do we actually, one of these organizations? Or is it actually something where you talk to several organizations to see who fits the project best? Or how does that work? It could, I guess, I'm surprised that some of, some of them definitely seem like sort of one-off services where you need this stable of people who can do that. But some seem like they're actually projects where you really might benefit from having more of an RFP type. And so how do you, obviously, you're in the business, you choose to do it this way. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yeah, so you're absolutely right, Councilmember Nash. The, the, the services do range pretty broadly. So, you know, for example, one of the services that we rely on for, for the, on the on-calls, they, they support our, our land development engineering team performing either, either services that are very, very specific and, and require certain certifications, like our, our land surveyor. So that's, that's, that's one of the on-call services. We also have construction inspection support on, on the land development team. Because we, you know, we, we do have on-call, we do have construction inspectors on staff, but the, you know, the, the construction activities really kind of vary throughout the year in terms of when, when the demand is. So we, we need that support to kind of handle the, the peaks. And then we do, and on the, on the CIP side, we obviously have projects that we're, we are doing design. Yes, we, we, we could issue RFPs for, for some of those projects. Again, it's, it's, this, this is a tool that can, that's utilized to help reduce the number of RFPs that we need to write, evaluate, and then, and then contract individually on. So for, for those types of projects, if there's, if there's multiple consultants that, that can provide that service, then, then we typically will reach out to a couple of them to, to, to see if they, you know, are interested, have, have time available to work on the project and, and receive quotes. Or if there's one, one specific consultant that, that is kind of the expert in that field, we, we will potentially just reach out to that one.
Thank you. And then as you, how do you go about getting back, getting feedback on consultants after the project is done? So that, for example, after the transportation master plan is completed or some other, some project, how do you, or the library project is just completed from Nolan Tam, how do you get feedback from a broad range of people to go into the, to evaluate how well the person, that service was performed, and whether or not you would hire the, the group again?
Yeah. So like I mentioned, we, we currently don't have a formal kind of written evaluation at the, at the end of a project. But, but the, the, these contracts, these consultants are discussed regularly throughout the, throughout the project development process and through construction. You know, all, all the different engineering teams have regular weekly meetings where, where we, you know, discuss what, what everyone's working on, status updates on projects, what's working, what's not working, how to improve things. And, and those types of concerns, if, if a consultant isn't, isn't living up to the expectations that we have for them, typically arise in those types of meetings so that, that, that all of the staff working on projects, you know, can hear firsthand of, of, you know, if there are any issues, what those are.
So I would love to see some sort of more formal evaluation, which perhaps you already have the experience from past, past lives in other cities, that basically looking at best practices and seeing how we can gather that information, not just from staff members, but also from the community who interacts with the consultant. Because I believe that sometimes the community members, the commission members may have a different perspective and different insights that would be valuable to collect. And so I'd really like to see something, as Mayor Taylor said, some sort of evaluation process that actually provides some sort of formalized feedback. I'm not trying to get terribly involved, but just something that could document the feedback and then feed into the system so that we make sure that as we're hiring, rehiring organizations, that it's something which has worked well in the past.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation and would be willing to make a motion. I don't know if here we are, this is like a solution looking for a problem. It's, it's, it's a, a master agreement, and it is something of which I, I think we, we have our role as council and the staff has their role. At, at a time in which we are reducing council, excuse me, reducing staff, we're now asking for another thing of which we want staff to do, like add on to this performance agreement, add on this, this outreach to commissioners and to, and to citizens and residents. And, and I, I would sort of trust that staff, as they are having, they are the experts and they are having these interactions, that they're not going to go back and give business to organizations or companies that have not delivered. I, I just, so I, I don't know if like us getting into this micromanaging is, is really accomplishing anything. Again, it is, it is a, a master agreement of which, you know, allows the city staff to engage in these individual engagements as needed. And so I don't know that I, again, like I say, I would just reiterate, this seems to me like we're, we're a solution looking for a problem. And to then sort of, again, like as we've gone through this whole effort of exercise of having to cut staff, that then to sort of layer on this another, another obligation, when we don't have very specific, like indications from me that this has gone wrong, right? Certainly there, we could all point to some, some instances with contractors, with vendors or the city where, where the service has, has not been great. But it's, to me, that, that has not been systematic, not to the extent to which I would be concerned here. And so I, I don't know, like, again, I'm, I don't feel like, like I'm in a place to actually dig into and, and make, say, like with some sort of architectural firm that like I'm going to, you know, be the judge of that versus staff who is interacting with them. I, I think we have to trust our staff. We have to trust that they're going to engage in, 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 with people, with organizations who, who they trust. And that if there are situations where those, those companies aren't delivering for the city, then they won't go back to them. But, but I don't think that this is going to be solved by, by, I don't see that there's much of a problem. If it was, again, I don't see that it's going to be solved by us micromanaging here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Well, I see this as something in our policy, our policy hat. We don't have a performance review, so we can just add a performance review. Since we don't have one, how do we know if, how do, how do we know what the rating of a company is unless there's a performance review? And if we don't have one, why not add one?
So if I'm, to me, the, the person who is, these companies who are delivering these services are interacting most directly with, with staff. And so I don't see where there is this, in creating a performance review sort of infrastructure. I, I don't see where there is, is value. I'm going to, again, trust that staff is going to engage companies that are delivering for the city, and that if those companies are not delivering for the city, then staff will not engage them. If I don't believe that staff can do that, then, then why are we having this discussion? Is that we need to replace staff? Then that's a discussion we should have. Which staff do you think need to be replaced? Because at this point, I think that we're talking about things that we should let staff determine. And, and I don't know about like having this performance review overlay, what that delivers. And who, it, to me, it's, it's more things that we're going to, more bureaucracy, more things that we're going to require of staff to have to deliver to us.
to have to deliver to us at a time of which there is less staff, right? At a time of which there is lots of additional challenges that, 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 that staff is facing. We're going to say, hey, we don't trust you, right? We don't think you're going to engage in people who are doing what's right for the city. And so we're going to put this, 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 this review. And so my question is, is that like, if you don't trust the staff, then we need to be talking about getting rid of staff?
I see it a little differently. I, I appreciate your perspective. I see it a little differently. I see this as a, a purchasing policy, our consulting contract services. I see it as a policy issue and looking at, we, do we have best practices for, or should I say, do the contractors we deal with have best practices? And what is their performance review? If I, we haven't, this isn't on the list, but I'm getting calls from people about who we have just recently hired for our billing for water. And so do we have a performance review for the water setup? I don't know. According to this, we don't. And so if we don't have this anywhere in our purchasing policy, who we do business with, then what do we have to go back to in policy, our own policy, um, to gauge whether this is someone that's going to be on this extensive list of, what is it, 27 different contractors that we have on here? So I think it is a, a policy. I don't know, based on what I hear from Councilmember Carlton and also from Councilmember Nash. So I see it a little differently.
Ms. Silver?
Thank you. So, um, and I don't want to get into the middle of the, of the policy debate. I think it's a good one. But I did want to just observe a, a, a couple of things. And that is, is that, as you know, this, this list of consultants is more geared towards kind of, uh, technical, public works types of, um, services. So we have engineers and, and architects and, and the like. We have another, and, and those groups, those consultants typically just relate to staff. They really don't get out in the public and, and deal with the public. We have another group of consultants, like our EIR consultants, who are very engaged with the public. And, um, for those types of consultants, I would see where you may want to have some type of performance review because a part of their job function is to relate to the public. But typically with, with engineers who are just doing survey documents and submitting them to the staff and not having interaction with the public, um, we don't typically see a, a performance review. The second thing that I wanted to mention is that with, um, these types of technical contractors, when you're dealing with, um, public contracting, um, if you want to, there is a, there is a policy in larger cities where you can disqualify a contractor for not performing. It's called disbarment. And what you want to do with a large, it generally happens with large agencies where staff aren't aware that, you know, three years ago on a contract on, that was entered into, by another department, this contractor, um, didn't perform their duties. And so there's a formal process for disbarment. And again, that's a good process for, for certain situations. In, in this situation, the way our contracts are, are set up, I don't know that it's necessarily needed because these are master contracts. If, um, the, if staff sees that there's a problem, then they just don't give them another task order. If they wanted to instead go through this disbarment process, it's a pretty substantial, um, process and, and there's an appeal to the council, et cetera. So in any event, I just wanted to, um, raise those two issues for council's consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Nash and then Councilmember Mueller.
Actually, I will let Councilmember Mueller speak first. He has not spoken on this recently.
So the way I see it is that there's two, uh, public policy purposes to look at. One is quality and one is price. And, um, both sort of reach a nexus at the end. So you can, during the term of a contract or a master service agreement, you can be assessing quality. And the thing about a master service agreement is you get, quality's bad, then you just stop it. But you still want a policy at the point to assess price. And you want that level set at a point that you've achieved the best price possible while assessing quality to the end. And then at the end, you're also going out to competitive bid. If you set price, if you set the duration too early, you're not going to get the best price. And you're also probably paying upon the complexity of the projects or master service agreement. You might not really get a really great assessment of quality either. So, uh, you could, depending, but, uh, you know, I am, I, I am curious, you know, it, I would, I would, uh, say that as a compromise, I would be at, uh, three years on this per term. And then in terms of quality, you know, on a three-year term, you're, everyone's going to have a pretty good idea of what the quality is like for those folks and whether or not, uh, I do understand that there might be some assessment. There might be some concern that it's not, uh, auditable, uh, how that they've been, been doing. So you might, you might say that, uh, as a policy, that at the three-year term mark, like there could be points awarded for positive past performance, but then you're, but then you're waiting, in essence, you're waiting, uh, the competitive bid process in favor toward prior people or prior business with the city. So, uh, I'd just share that with you guys before you think about it. I'm also kind of curious, uh, I'd be very interested to hear from, from, from city management why it's, would be five years as opposed to three or one? What, what the, what their, uh, what their reasoning was for that?
Is the recommendation three years or five years?
It's three. Okay.
I thought it was three. Please correct me, Starla.
I thought it was three, too. Let me just.
All right, well, then I just got that confused with the board policy from the board supervisors, I read. So I, I, I think, I, I, I wonder if it can be, if we can find like a compromise where we leave it at three, but that there's some assessment at the end of the three-year, uh, evaluation and, and, see, Matt Robinson, I wonder, because sometimes there is turnover, that if there, if that would make sense for some assessment at the end of the contract so that people might have a historical, be able to pass on historical knowledge? Because we do, we do have a fair bit of, of turnover.
So to answer the first question, the reason we try and do longer-term master agreements is for efficiency and economy of scale. I think Michael Foo walked us through the process that was used. That's fairly time-intensive and, and we could do it annually, but it, it is going to take a fair amount of time. And to answer the second question, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mueller, what, what was the follow-up question?
It had to do with assessment, uh, of performance review at the end of the contract so that if there's a problem with the contractor, because basically at the end of the three-year time period, you're going out to bid again. So if there was an assessment at the end of that, it would be a, 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 a reporting that others could rely on if there was turnover and turnover.
So, um, we could definitely do some kind of, uh, end of master agreement assessment internally. I think that there is, as, as Chris has pointed out, there's continuous discussion if a consultant is not fulfilling the work that they've been doing and we just simply would never hire them again if they were not living up to the standard. And there's also turnover at the consultant's shop so that who we start out with in year one may be a little bit different in year three. But we certainly can appreciate the council's concern about quality of service. And, and that's very important to us as well. I mean, we don't want to work with a consultant who does not meet their timeline and does not follow through with a quality product for the city.
Councilmember Nash?
So I am interested in having some sort of formal written evaluation. And I'm not talking about something that's, um, I'm talking about something fairly simple. I don't know exactly what it is. That would be up to staff. But I think that, um, when, and I'm, I'm also talking about, um, this is for projects that are public-facing, not for the ones that are, um, a shorter term, either a shorter-term public-facing project or, uh, one that's just, um, mostly deals with the staff and staff can absolutely evaluate it. But I'm really talking about when we have a task force or some sort of, um, broad community outreach, I think that it behooves us to do some sort of evaluation. And it doesn't have to be anything tremendously intensive. It can just be having some sort of standard sheet that people fill out if they want to at the end of some sort of project. And it would be a project-related and not, um, at the end of a service agreement. I'm very, honestly, for example, the Heritage Tree Task Force spent two years together and at the end of it, there was no evaluation. And I think it would have been really valuable for projects such as that to have some sort of quick evaluation, if people wanted to, of the consultants that were involved. So that, you know, the, it's the pros and cons of them. It may be that these are wonderful and we want to definitely use them against the people. But, um, I think that there is, um, input that could be, um, could be retrieved from the, from people that actually is respectful of the people having just invested a tremendous amount of time in this process. That would be beneficial for, um, to just put as a written record as part of, uh, and I don't know if that, um, again, this is, I'm not trying to micromanage this. Staff, however they want to do it. But somehow get some evaluation from people who have just spent a lot of time with, um, a given consultant and, um, or consulting firm and provide that information to staff. Staff does however they want, but somehow it is put into a file so that when we do get to these master agreements, there is some sort of track record. And, um, I'm sure there's a best practice that our staff knows or that can be adopted from a, in nearby city, um, as to how we do this. And it's, um, not for every project, but very honestly, when I started to look at these projects and also at what was presented in the staff report, where we have, um, we're talking about project examples being the transportation master plan, the TIP analysis, Safe Routes to School, are all things that I have been involved in, in, um, one short form or another, either now or in a prior life. And it would be very beneficial to, um, have been able to, you know, I think it would be beneficial for people to collect that input. How it's used, whatever is still, you know, staff can look at it. But I think it's respectful of people who invest, a lot of the community members who invest time in the process and, um, beneficial when we're evaluating these firms. And I'm not talking about, there's a lot of things on here, on the list of types of services that have, that's not relevant to at all. There's many things that are just staff-based that there's, you know, that's, how staff collects the evaluation is done internally. I'm strictly talking about things that are more public-facing.
Ms. Nagaya?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mayor Taylor, um, Suniti Nagaya, Public Works Director. So I just wanted to, to bring up a couple of, of points. So appreciate the, the idea of doing a more, more detailed performance review. If I understand Councilmember Nash's request correctly, it would be a sort of form where we would solicit public input in order to get feedback on a particular process that, that has been heavily, um, the community's been heavily invested in. So I think that's something that we can take, uh, back and, and look at as we go forward on projects. I believe we're also, um, going to initiate in the upcoming fiscal year a, um, request for proposals, uh, policy that our administrative services team would be putting together. So that would be the place where we could, uh, memorialize this feedback as we go forward with that process. And then, um, just particularly on the transportation master plan, I just wanted to clarify, because that was a very publicly, a very heavy public investment and community, a lot of community involvement. We went through a process to solicit proposals, um, as well as had the council approve the scope of work for the transportation master plan and the, the transportation impact fee update, uh, process. But, um, use the master agreement just to expedite the actual execution of the contract with the consultant. So they were already on an on-call list, but we, we went through a, a public process to, to get them under contract because of the nature of the work. The same, same thing for, for Alta and the Safe Routes to Schools program. So it helps us on the backend to administer those contracts, to do that more quickly. But usually when there's a, a heavy involvement of, um, the consultant in a public engagement process, we, we would do a separate RFP process and bring that to the council for an award or approval of the scope in order to make sure that, um, we're hitting, checking all the boxes, hitting all the marks around the engagement process.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Councilmember Nash, did you still have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to say that that makes me feel much better because I was under the impression before that we did do that. And then after this discussion, I thought that we were not. So, yeah, so it's, it's using firms that are on this, in, under master agreement, but still going through an RFP process and doing some, um, selection there. Correct?
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, I had to, to get my speaker back on.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Did anyone else have any follow-up questions? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I just, um, wanted to state that, given that we're in such a unique economy right now where rates may be decreasing, um, I have no insight, well, who, none of us can see into the future, but I just wanted to throw that out as, um, whether we are going to be committed to three years if rates drop significantly. Will we be committed to three years at this rate? Or can we renegotiate if, um, the economy changes and rates go down? Realizing if, if it was the reverse, we would not want to.
Is that a question for Ms. Nagaya or?
Well, I guess my question is, um, given, given the economy, are, is it prudent to get into a three-year agreement? Not knowing what is going to be happening with the downturn?
Right. So, um, I think, as was mentioned before, that the pricing is, is, when we did the original RFP, we did ask for pricing over a three-year period where you typically do get better rates. If we had asked for pricing for just a one-year contract, um, the rates would generally be a little bit higher. That being said, if you were to go with the three years and then rates were to suddenly decrease, I know that we were in a situation like that during the last recession. And what we would typically do is just ask the vendors for, you know, an, an updated, uh, price sheet reflecting lower rates. And almost all of our, uh, professional service vendors were cooperative. With that request, knowing that all we would need to do is, is just go on to the next vendor who, who would honor the request. So it is possible to renegotiate in that fashion.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Well, at this time, does anyone want to make a motion on this item? I think actually Vice Mayor Combs, there was a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I, I mean, a, a sort of half motion. I'll, I'll, I'll make it more fully. I, I would move that, uh, we accept the staff recommendation and authorize the city manager to execute a master agreement with consulting firms for on-call architecture, landscape architecture, so engineering, construction, inspection, municipal engineering, and materials testings over the course of, of three, three years.
Councilmember Mueller?
Vice Mayor Combs, would you add a friendly amendment to that to do, uh, a value, uh, include an evaluation at the end of the three-year time period? Or some, some memorialization of evaluation of the vendors at the end of the three-year time period to be attached to the MSA?
So like, how is that, like, because, like, some of these vendors may never be engaged, right? And so I'm just sort of, and so are we saying like a per project? And then like sort of, and then I think you have to put sort of framings on, on what type of project? and then I think you have to put sort of framings on, on what type of project should you want that, that performance review? Are you seeing every, every, every project?
Yeah, I mean, I can understand the difficulty there. What was interesting to me was when Ms. Nagaya said that they were putting together a formalized RFP process. And this might be the place to, to deal with that in that process. Because in a formalized RFP process, there is a rating system, a point, a point awarded system typically in every RFP process that I've been involved, that I've seen. They might be able to include it in that. I don't know if that's something that my colleagues find reassuring.
So, so I can understand it. So in, in scenarios where there is a, a more formalized RFP process, where they may just on the backend be relying on this master service agreement, that, but in those instances, that there be a, some sort of performance evaluation or assessment?
Right.
Okay. Oh, that would be fine with me.
Is that agreeable to my colleagues? Mayor Taylor, Councilmember Carlton, and Councilmember Nash?
Councilmember Nash?
Could you please explain what you're talking about again? Obviously, if there's no, if there hasn't been any work done, there's nothing to evaluate. If the, if the, if it hasn't been used. So I would assume that staff could use their judgment and basically we're just sort of saying we want it as opposed to specifying it.
Well, one of the ways that this could be done is instead of awarding points, which would, now that I think about it, instead of awarding, awarding points, which is, which would create bias toward a prior, somebody that prior at the business, instead you would subtract points for vendors who had prior business and just were bad. And in that way, you're not, you're not putting, you're not, you're not favoring prior, prior vendors, but you're actually just saying you've bad poor performance, it's going to count against you. But I think that that gets, that basically what happens is that's something that's taken, that's something that can be, actually, that's something, to be candid, that's something that could be awarded, that's something that can take place at the front of the, the, the bid process for the MSA or for an RFP, is that you can say, basically, are you rewarding negative points for past performance? Does that make sense?
Councilmember Nash?
So I think it does. I'm actually interested in leaving more of it to staff and just making sure that we collect the information in some form or have some sort of evaluation process and then leaving it to staff as to how exactly they use that information. But I'm just interested in having it collected and then assume that staff would be using it appropriately.
Yeah. And candidly, I don't want to come up with, I, I, now that I think about it, and this is really, I do feel like I'm starting to like micromanage how I do their work. Like, I just want to be informed that, that there's thought around it. And I think that it's a valid point to say, yeah, that, that's something that they need to do. So I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can all get to, into this. So anyway, I, I did have a second that was seconded by Councilmember Combs, but I have actually forgotten it now. So, which is embarrassing, but I'm really tired. Yeah, on this one, or I think I'm going to come down as I'm going to second, I'm going to second his motion and say that I really appreciated the conversation because I've learned a lot from it. And then candidly, what I'm interested to, to, to see is that because as, as our city attorney has pointed out, this is really a master service agreement for internal workings that staff has ongoing relationship, that's not external facing, so they might not know what was taking place. I'm going to support the motion, but I am going to say that I, in the motion that comes forward us on the MSA that's external facing, I'm going to be looking for thought around that evaluation. Because I think that there have been some really valid, valid concerns about that in terms of how are we capturing that. But I'm just not sure that this is the vehicle to, the vehicle upon which that, that, that we need to, to move on that at the moment. And I also am very much looking forward to taking these learnings and putting them into, learning how they're implemented in the future RFP process.
And just for clarity on the motion, it's going to be the motion as stated by Vice Mayor Combs with no friendly amendment. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. So the motion by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Mueller to authorize the city manager to execute master agreements with consulting firms for on-call architectural, landscape, architectural, civil engineering, construction, inspection, municipal engineering, and materials testing services by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You guys have a, are we done?
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And yes, we are done and happy June 13th, everyone, and we'll see you next Tuesday.
And Drew, happy, happy second child, Father's Day.
Thank you.
So have a happy, great weekend, you guys.
You, too. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.